Sounds good.
Um.
The United States of America. For which stands one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you're good to go, right?
All right. What's that, Mike?
Uh, let's see, we don't have any old. Excellent. Um, so we don't have any old business and right to the new business applicants not here, but. Alright, so I kind of at the planning board's discretion, I think if you want to review the application, we're here. The, and I'm sure you're familiar, the process is pre-application, informal review, if there's any comments. Um, I've gone through. I shared my original draft for the findings of fact with you. I went through today and really kind of. Beefed it up. Uh, did kind of a. For what they submitted. Um, and I'll share my comments with them when we can go through it now, but um.
Wait, go through the whole application?
We don't go through the whole application, but um, I think the, the main thing that is probably useful to come out of this is. If there are any issues that the planning board sees or any concerns so that the applicant can be sure to address it. Now, you know, that doesn't mean there's cer- certain things like this is a good opportunity. If you have suggestions for them, like I think this concerns me. We can raise it. There's certain things that they can say no, and then there's certain things that the ordinance allows the planning board to.
You know, like a hammerhead turn into a cul-de-sac. We don't need to revisit that again.
Right, right.
So are we allowed to? If there's no one here. How does that work?
So.
Don't usually we, 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 someone has to come before the board?
Yeah, and I think that this is, I don't think that ordinance says anything one way or the other that they have to be here. I think the fact that they're not here, if the planning board decided we, we're not going to take this up today. Um, that would be fine. They can just do their pre-application meeting or pre-submital meeting, wherever it's called, the next meeting. I think that it kind of, the board can do as they please at, at this point. I think as far as I've seen, I was assuming they were going to be here, so I didn't really look into this, but. It, I don't see any reason that this couldn't be counted as their pre-submital meeting. I also don't see any reason that the board has to count it as their pre-submital meeting, so.
Oh, we all got it?
Yes, they, they provided hard copies of this.
So, um. I guess one thing we could do, where I would like to make recommend that we do is have a site visit.
That is, that was a question of uh.
Do you think that a site visit, because for one thing, I mean, I'm sort of familiar, not too familiar, but a bit familiar. With this piece of land and. I can't imagine they're going to get all that septic systems on all that.
Well, they have to be able to.
So do they have to be able to, before they can divide it into lots to be? Or, or get approval as a, of a, as a subdivision? Does it all have to be perked?
They, um, so. They did, they do identify um, points where they're doing the, the perk tests um, or soil. Pit test. Um, they don't need to like go through the full engineering, have designs and everything. I think they're essentially, they do the first level, which is. Go test this and say, okay, here's what the perk. You know, here's the soil is, could they do it? That's something that I want, I, I wanted to ask them for, they didn't provide yet.
Cause on the map here, it shows that they have all the test pits on each individual lot, so.
Since it's winter and this was bought in winter, they obviously, you know, you couldn't really.
Yeah, I don't know, but that's, and that may be, um, you know, they maybe, maybe they did it when it was fifty degrees a couple of weeks ago or last week, whenever that was. Um, so that's either way, I think we need to get that, get that, and that's certainly something that the planning board could deny the.
They drew this back in October, so they must have been out there and done those tests then, yeah, they may, they may.
Kind of conveyed.
Well, they, I mean, maybe they got on there before, so, um.
Yeah, I see that, we're right.
Yeah. So they, yeah.
These conservation easements.
Um, so one of the requirements for subdivision is the ten percent of the overall subdivision is left as open space. Don't know if it necessarily. Very well defined, like this is what opens basic. But it essentially means it's ten percent of it is, you can't develop it. The way that I guess they're handling it is they're putting anything that's within. Within the shoreline buffer, they're at the back of the property is just going to be in conservation, which means it won't be developed. And it's going to remain, you know, basically untouched as.
Yeah, but a conservation easement is a specific legal tool. You have to have someone to hold the easement.
Yeah.
Town doesn't want to be in this business.
No.
I'm sure DRA or you know, CRCT doesn't want to be doing these weird little easements. So, I mean, an easement is not the proper.
Well, they, they, they may, that's something we can ask them is like, have you talked to, whether it's coastal rivers or, you know, anybody else that wants to? That's going to take it on.
Okay, when I was a landsman, I used to say, I mean, who would want to take on perpetual oversight of this little scrappy piece of land?
Yeah, um, it'll also, it may not necessarily need to be. That it has to be like an easement. Like a conservation easement, it could be that they put it on the subdivision and, and it's basically says this is. You know, forever undevelopable. You know, at, at least while the subdivision approved subdivision plan is recorded and. That, so they can, they could basically designate some space that is not going to be de- developed and it's. Kind of between the town registry of deeds and the property owners there.
So are these, are these, these are part of parcels?
Yes, there's two parcels that are up there.
One acre, so. Okay, so it has four acres, it's four acres and one acre of it is a conservation easement.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the water's across the road, yes?
The, um. Drinking water, that was, I, I was going to ask them, I believe it is on the road there, or it's on Stanpipe Road, I think there's a.
You're talking about Little Pond. Just up, well, the, yeah, the road to it is just up from this site and to the right.
Right.
The standpipe is from this lot, you good arm, you can throw a rock to it.
Right, right, so I believe there is. You, and that was something I want to confirm with them is in here, it says it's going to be served by town water, um, which makes sense to me.
It says that they're asking, they're still waiting to hear.
No, there's a letter in this packet from them, from the sanitary district that says that they can approve the usage of the water. And they asked if they wanted a hydrant on the development itself.
I did not see that in there.
It's in this hard copy, Mike.
Oh, maybe not in the.
The sanitary district.
Maybe not in the digital.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I will look for that. Um. I, I saw a couple of other letters that they were, I assume were drafts that they were going to be sending to like the state, but.
It was an email chain between Scott Abatoni and uh.
No, I don't think I did see that. But I will, if it's in the hard copy, I'm, I'll make sure. That I get it, because then also elsewhere in the application, it was basically saying. They said both things, like it was going to be wells on every property or some other places said that they were going to have, uh. They were going to have town water, which I think either one. Would work generally, if they go with town water, it's probably a little bit easier because. I don't think they would need to do was like a hydrologic test that the, the ordinance calls for. If you're taking out more than, I think it's a thousand gallons or ten thousand gallons, there's some limit that if they don't have any wells on the site, they clearly wouldn't hit. But if they are putting wells on the site, they're probably going to hit it if you go above like four houses, so.
Cause on December twenty-third, Scott wrote and says, we do have water service to that area. There is a twelve inch Dr. Lyon line that is in that area and it's adequate supply for your project.
Okay.
And it says, do you want a hydrant in the subdivision? If this move forward, we can talk about these.
And that, and that's something I want to talk to the fire chief about is. Is where, I don't, I also don't know where the closest fire hydrant is, but if depending on where it is, do they want a fire hydrant in here?
Yeah, there is one down by Leon Hutchins's house.
Okay, so that's.
And there's also one across from, um. Doug Sewell's. Right there on Ned Kirkland's property, there's one right there.
Yeah.
So I mean, if they're putting, if they're going to put water, you know, town water in here, it might make sense to just put a hydrant in.
I would think so.
So we'll, we'll have to see, it sound, it sounds like maybe the, what they sent me may have been. Older, we're just missing one thing, but again, this is informal, so we'll make sure we address it for the real, for the actual submission.
Unless this, is this property been lost, staked out?
Um, they, they did have a surveyor out there and I believe in here it does, one of the things, one of their comments about. You know, responding to the ordinance says that they have the, I think rebar at all the corners.
Correct.
And then.
Caps and then granite marble granite at the driveway entrance.
Yeah, at least around, I think it was, I think what they said was at all the corners and the tangent points of the road, so there should be a decent amount of.
Road been brushed out?
That's, I don't, I don't think they had, has yet.
They weren't getting to do that.
What I'm getting at.
Maybe I misread it, maybe.
Be basically nothing much more than leisurely walk in the woods.
Cause it's not.
What's there or what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Or anything else. And if it snows, it's really going to be.
Yeah, we can't do it.
Yeah, right.
I mean, even now, if things haven't been tentatively started. To find the points where things are, there's, it's, it's difficult to walk in the woods.
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, even if they did stake it and.
You still have to walk around, find the pins.
Right, exactly.
All these plants, they got to delineate wetlands and stuff like that. I mean. If they were found to have falsified some record in there.
Right.
Would be an issue, but I don't really need to go out and like survey it, you know, look at the thing.
Yeah.
And say, oh, there's a wetland over there, but I'm not even going to know where I am.
Right.
For one thing.
Right.
There's a lot of.
So my, my point is a site visit in, uh. I don't, I don't think it's.
Here now.
Well, use time, yeah.
Not now, but I think eventually.
When they get the road built. Naturally built. You know, we could.
I got concerned about like this.
I want permission to this before they build.
I was going to say, they're not going to brush a road out until they get a somewhat of a green light, right?
Well, I, I'm just concerned about like the elevation at the end of the road there, you know, you know. There's a lot of, what elevation.
Right.
And then there's this.
Two lines at one foot.
You, two feet each.
I mean, it might not be that much, but I think that there's kind of like. This is a big drop off down to this swamp, right? Is there a swamp there?
There's a, yeah, eventually, but right where the hammerhead end, there is a little bit of a, I think it's forested wetland. That's there, where, where it kind of gets close, it's minimal, but. And it's not the wetland that would be covered by shoreline, it's too small, so. But all, that's also, I think the, the big things that I noted that still probably are needed. Is the drainage design and the road design. They said that whatever they designed will meet the, the ordinance's requirements, but. Which I, at this point, I think is like fair, like we see what the ordinance says and we're going to meet it. And so for the submission, they'll have to actually provide that information, but. For now.
Do you want to get the opponent back?
I can go through and, and uh. Yeah, and we don't need to go through. Everything, you know, anything that, that they just sufficiently addressed and I'll send you this updated one, anything they sufficiently addressed, I. I don't see any reason to.
I did not read it, word to word.
Yeah, well, and I just updated this today, um, but the, the. First question was, does the board wish to visit the site to do a site visit? You know, my feeling on, on a lot of this is. Probably usually it's. I'm not a big fan of site visits because. You know, I want stuff in the record, so if they, if we, if it basically is they need to bring the information to you and have it written down so that you, you know, has to be understood here. Then that means in five years, if someone has to go back and look at it, we'll have that information rather than. You know, it doesn't mean that going to the site and getting some context is useful sometimes, but I.
Well, it's not one individual project either. I mean, you don't know all these houses are going to be built on the lots.
Right.
Somebody might buy a house and one, you know, they might say, oh, I'm going to put the house here and the guy buys a lot and puts his house way back on the backside of it.
Yeah.
So.
So that's.
The only thing you're really going to, you could actually look at. Would be the tentative location of the road.
Right.
And that's literally it.
Yeah. So that's.
Going through the road, I mean, the road has to be passable. And they can't.
Yeah, and there are.
Lines on there. People have to be able to get, you know, travel on it.
And there, there are, um, there are standards, like I'm pretty sure that are in here about how, what the curve up and down can be in, in addition to, you know. Horizontally, so, um. Does the board want to bring any outside consultants to review the application? That was one of the. You know, this is just stuff from the. From the subdivision ordinance.
Well, I mean, if, if there's going to be, um.
Not that you have to decide right now, but are you expecting to?
Weren't we going to use like the soil and water conservation district to look at like road? You know, or storm, what?
I don't call that, but I'm looking at the roads.
Well, I mean, if, if, if we're not going to have, see, they, they're not required to have any DEP permits for storm water control, right?
Um, they, they, they did have something, I don't know if it was from DEP or if it was. NRP that was in here that they.
But for the, the forested wetland.
Yeah.
A level wander, you know, or something.
Yeah, so, um, they did provide, I, I, I imagine you, you saw they did do the. Soil resource report, soils map, and then, you know, it's, it's. Kind of cursory and, and it is site specific, but it's not like, this, I'm sure this is just the information that was in. The database that, you know, that, the. So. If there are outside consultants, again, you don't, we don't need to decide this now, but if there are. You know, then let me know and we'll try to line that up just because I don't want to. Setting that up is going to take a little back and forth and I want to take any longer than necessary on this, um.
Do you want to get them to look at? Jenny?
Well. I do we, do we inspect roads after they're, they're built?
That one's going to get inspected, I guarantee.
So.
Code enforcement.
Well, or.
Or, or you?
Or.
Or do we get?
We could have a.
Be nice to have someone else other than you or.
Like, yeah, an actual engineer.
Yeah, just.
Um, we could.
They could look at the plan even if they just looked at the.
Yeah.
Review of the plan.
That's, so we.
Confirm that.
I was going to say, they have confirmed that it's done to the plan.
Right, and that's where. That's where it's probably harder to. The, this, the. Training, the expertise probably isn't so much in looking at a plan and saying, did you build this? It's more in. Figuring out, is this the standard we want to build it to and what does all of this mean? Here's what we, you need to require them to do. But we, we can certainly do, do that, and I, I will say. We're not going to be, we don't really issue certificates of occupancy at the moment, but. We should do kind of closeout inspections so that we can. For, for the developer or applicant's benefit and for the town's benefit to say, yep, you're done, you've done everything you need to do, you can move forward and there's no.
You've done the hammerhead and not the.
Right, exactly, to say, yes, you built what was approved.
Get into a situation like we just were in.
Exactly.
Right, and that's, so that, so there, so there is that, and if, you know, we can kind of decide how we want to. Inspect all of that. And we can talk about kind of generally, you know, later, but with this, if that's something that is. A concern, like right now, we, I don't know what they're planning on doing for a road, my guess is it's probably going to just be a dirt road that's, you know, built to. Whatever the standards of the ordinance are.
That's what I got out of reading that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They said.
Yeah, that's, so, I mean, they, they're going to have to provide some more detail, but, right, I mean, that's, the ordinance allows that and. So we can, when we see what they're proposing. When we see what they're proposing, if it's something particularly complicated, or if it's something fairly simple, then the board can decide how best to. Manage that. Um. What I wanted to check with the board on now was. Um. Scheduling of a public hearing. There's public hearings going to be required for this and. Do you want to allow me to? Once I get an application, if I say, if, if it's up, basically my judgment, like, yes, they've, they're, they've gotten all the information that you'll need to review this. Um. Once they get that to me, then I can schedule a public hearing or do you want to?
I think that makes sense right there.
Okay, that's.
You should have it in hand.
Yes, that's, so I'll wait to have. Basically all of these. Um, preliminary plan for major subdivision. Submission, which is.
Actually do our review.
Well, we can, I mean, the board can do the review and have a public hearing at the next meeting, potentially if that's what you want to do. Um, and that way. You know. I, I, I do not want to rush the board in any way. I just figure if we can line this up so that we, if the board does want to. Move, you know, as quickly as the ordinance allows, then, you know, you're able to. Um. No, and, and sometimes it takes, you know, like three weeks to notice it. So if they, they might not even have everything in time for the next planning board meeting to. Be noticed for a public hearing, but.
In the same, I don't want to sit here next year and have the same discussion that we're having about the other one. So.
Yeah, no.
We got to make sure that we. Grasp all that we get from that one and have a stamp set of drawings that they're going to build from and that's it.
Right.
Right?
And often get done until it's done.
Correct.
Yeah.
There's a lot of concerns about that, that I know that people on the standpipe road have on, on the increase in traffic.
Hmm.
And speed and volume.
Yep.
Just because people are using it as a shortcut. To avoid town and to like even a shortcut, you know, out to route one.
I use it all the time.
Yeah. And, and there's just been a, a real steady increase in traffic and people are going faster.
Yeah.
So that's a concern of residents, I know. And that would be their concern of just. A housing development on. On this part of the road.
Yeah. And that's.
Know what can be done to.
I don't think anything.
Yeah, yeah, right. It's, it's hard, not, not on like an individual project basis.
But what I mean is the town, could the town put up, you know, those little blinking lights that tell you when you're going too fast or? You know, there might be things that they can do to try to just slow down traffic.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that. Yes, there are things that the town can do to address traffic. It, unfortunately. The amount of traffic that's generated, even by a subdivision much larger than this, it doesn't really move the needle in terms of how much traffic is going on some of these roads. Just because that's how rural roads are. They tend to see how a lot of traffic, even though there's not really a ton of development around them because they are almost like regional roads. Um, so it's not like you can. Say that this development is. You know, causing thirty percent of the traffic on the road. And so now it's overburdened and now you have to fix it. It's like, oh, this is going to be like a two percent increase or something and it's not. You know.
Not even two percent.
Right, so. Um, so it's probably larger, bigger picture stuff that, that we need to consider for, you know, if we're going to try to mitigate traffic speeds and things like that.
Um, so lot seven on here doesn't have a, a septic.
There's not a test pit identified on it.
That's fine.
Um.
Well.
Yeah, you're right.
There is nothing in the ordinance says it's got to be a buildable lot either. Is that? Says you've got to be able to build on it?
I don't know if, if it's. Yeah, I don't think, I mean, there are certain things that you have to do. There, there probably is something in here that says they need to address. Um. Excuse me, like wastewater management. So. I think the planning board could say, you know, are you building this? Like you're not going to be able to put a house on it. Because you, there's no. But I guess to your point, what could, could possibly happen is the, the planning board could be like, we can approve this. But just to be clear, this lot is not big enough to put a house on or, you know, doesn't have enough space for, or. May not be able to accommodate a septic or whatever, but if you want to create an unbuildable lot.
Well, they have two, they have two listed on six, so maybe that's just a question to take back to them of.
Yeah.
You know.
Um, so. What's the minimum lot size for a?
In the rural here?
Yeah, that, that requires for, for a lot that requires septic.
So the, the state minimum for septic, I think is just twenty thousand square feet. You have to have twenty thousand square feet. Per unit if you're on septic. But the town's minimum in rural is. It's like eighty thousand. I think it actually, it, it's now.
Is it eighty? It's two acres?
It's two acres out here, basically, yeah.
So, so some of these lots are under two acres?
Well, it's, it's. Right now, and I, because I went through to look to see, it's not. It's not exactly two acres. It, right now, I think it's like point five, five units per acre. So you need. I think it's like seventy nine thousand, six hundred square feet or something. Um. For, per lot. So it's almost two acres, but it's not exactly two acres.
All these lots.
And all, yeah, so I, I, and I went through to look and see, um.
Like.
Lot three is only one acre, one point zero six.
Lot.
Yeah.
Uh, lot three is, that's what's in.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
It's four acres. It's, there's only, yeah.
Yep.
The smallest one, I think is.
Lot seven, one point eight.
Yeah, and that one's eighty one thousand. So it's, it still is.
Over the seventy nine.
Minimum, yeah, size. Yeah, at least for. For Williams and I, and I should say, um. The. The adopted land use ordinance. And in conformance with L D two thousand and three, basically all of these lots can accommodate two units. And that's because you're always allowed. You know. Dammer Scotta requires, it's a eighty thousand square feet for a unit, for a dwelling unit in the rural area, in the rural district. The state has basically said everybody on any lot has to be able to have an A D U. If they can put subsurface wastewater on it and, you know, some other. They don't need to park it. You don't need to count towards density. So. Um. Potentially, everybody here could have their house with. A granny flat or whatever you want to, you know, call it in, in, above their garage or wherever. So. Just keep that in mind.
Their septic system would have to be scaled to allow.
Yes.
The number of bedrooms.
Yeah. You don't, the, the, the two things that, that L D two thousand and three does not get you around is. Um, shoreline zoning and septic requirements. So. Um. So one of the things in here was, uh, the board may require the review and endorsement of a plan. Uh, by the Knox Lincoln. Soil and Water Conservation District. So. We can kind of discuss that, um, as we go through it. Whether or not, and obviously it's already come up. Um. Who wanted to have Knox Lincoln Soil Water Conservation District look at this? Uh, I imagine they would be able to look at this hydrologic assessment that. Is also required and, and part of this. Um. So. Um, let me see. Oh, um, there is the issue of performance guarantee. Which I think can be handled relatively simply. It's just they need to have a certified check or a bond or something. Um, really for this, it's going to be for the road. I can't imagine it's to be a huge amount. But it does require the select board to be involved in this, which is kind of interesting because that means. It's going to come to the planning board and need to go to select board. And so I'll have to work that out, but. I just wanted to bring that up to see if there were any. Thoughts on it. Um. They did. Request, oh, there's a couple waivers and the first one was, um, they didn't want to have to provide a landscape plan. Cause they're, basically what they said is they're leaving. Everything basically natural and wooded, except for where they're building the road.
Why would they have a landscape plan?
Uh, yeah, that's, I think that's. Cause you know, individual property owners are going to come and they'll. They're not necessarily have to do a full blown, you know, engineered or whatever landscape plan, but they're going to have to show a plan of, you know, here's where I want to cut down trees and put my house and all of that, like anybody does. So. Um, so that's a waiver they're requesting. Um. Just more information mainly around the. You know, street layout, grading, stuff like that, that we already discussed. Um. The net residential density, which is, I think they essentially already addressed it. I just need to get the specific numbers from them. Um, one of the conditions that I put in here that I'm proposing is. Because of the ordinance is written, we have to put it, we should put a condition on the, whatever the plan that gets approved saying. They lots one and eight, which have frontage on Standpipe Road and this new road that the. Any driveway access cannot be from Standpipe Road. That's at least how the ordinance is written. So just put it in there as a condition. That way it's on the site plan. Um, I don't think that'll be an issue. I think in their proposal, they basically said. That's what they would be doing. Um. This is another.
Are they the developers of the, of the lots as well?
I don't think so. I think the way that I am understanding this is that their intention is to subdivide it, build the road, put in whatever utilities they're going to have in there. Um, and then sell the lots and basically individuals will buy a lot and put a piece of, put a house on it or do with it what they want.
That'd be more common.
Yeah, I think that's.
Say very similar to what they did out on the other one.
Yeah. Yeah. Um. That's the.
We've had any, we some divisions in there. Developing subdivision has actually been constructing buildings.
Right, building spec houses.
I haven't seen that yet. Then it could happen.
Right. Yeah. Um. Yeah, we talked about. I'm going to, I need to get in touch with the fire chief and get his input on this. Fire hydrant. Drainage, that actually might be. Think that might be it. I thought there were two waivers in here, but both of them, the ones that I have written. Were for, um. Landscape. Plan. So.
In their hard copy, Mike, and I gotta see if I can find it. They did talk about.
Maybe it's in highlighted. Oh, sorry. Now the other waiver was, um, a waiver from the standards for impact on groundwater quantity. Uh, they want a waiver from the requirement for a hydrologic study due to relatively low density of the project. This also is.
Public water?
If they're on public water, then it's going to be, I think, a moot point, but that was the other one. So those were the two landscaping.
Landscaping, that one, then the, um. Lost fresh control.
Right, because there's no great ponds.
Yeah, well, what they said was it's, it's not applicable because it's not within the.
Right.
Great pond, which I think makes sense.
Well.
Um. So. So those were the issues that I have found. Um. Yeah, and a lot of it was. I'm going to ask them for more.
So you write on the rebar, it's proposed.
Proposed, yeah, that's, that. Makes sense. Like what, what's probably on there is. Well, it's probably the proposed too, but I'm sure they went off of whatever's existing and. I wouldn't be surprised, surprised that there's not much existing, so. Um. That's everything I've got. Yeah.
You got any, uh, anything else?
I've just got a couple of comments. Um.
What?
And I don't know, I see someone's on, um. On Zoom, but I don't know if Jeanette is part of this or.
I haven't seen him.
Well. Um. All right, well, if that is, and they want to. I mean, then. They can, but, um, if the board doesn't bring anything else on that, I'm happy to go to. The few comments I've got.
Yeah, go right to the few comments you got.
Um. Or actually, you know, maybe you want to do public comment. If there is anybody who has public comment on anything else.
Well, I mean, this is just a preliminary review at this point.
Yeah, that's. Yeah. Um.
Do you want to say any of that?
Right.
Well, doing the lack of public, I think I'll just go real, real.
That's, seems fair. Um. Planner's report, so I, I mentioned that the land use ordinance amendments passed at the December tenth. Number ten, special town meeting. Uh, so the land use ordinance is updated. Shoreland zoning ordinance also pass, amendments passed. Um, and the comprehensive plan was adopted. So. That's all good. I'm still working on getting the comprehensive plan to the state for them to review. I've just been trying to get in touch with somebody at the state. I think the holidays, I know people were out, so. Um.
What do you do? Just put in an envelope and send it or?
I'm going to, you know, to them, but if they want a hard copy. They could, they could print it. They probably just want a digital copy anyway, but if they run it, if they want a hard copy, we'll send them a hard copy.
So. So what if they want big changes then? What happens? And then do we have to?
Well, if they, well, if they want any changes, yeah, we'll have to. Re-adopt it. I don't, I, I'll be surprised. It's.
It's pretty well done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's thorough and. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but I'm, I'm not expecting that they would. And it's, and it is in effect, even if they say, no, this doesn't meet the, the. State standards or it's not consistent with the state, like the towns adopted it. We can, like, it still supports zoning and does, provides the direction, does everything else that it does, so. Um, that's, oh, the only question I had was, um, would you like? Hard copy and I was, you know, I already talked with Wilder, but, um, if you want a hard copy of either the land use ordinance or the zoning ordinance that was. Uh, we just adopted. Yeah, okay, I'll print it out and do you want, I can, I'm happy to get it to you. I can leave it here or bring it to the next meeting. It's up to you.
Bring it to the next meeting. I wouldn't, you can do it here leisure sometime if you've got a minute.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Yes, I would like hard copies and, I mean, do you guys?
Yeah. Yeah, I had printed three and I, I gave, saw it. I don't have another one right now, but. Um, and I sent the shoreline zoning ordinance up to the state because they also, they do have to review that. I don't see, couldn't be any issue. And the other thing I have is the next meeting is Monday, February third. You're not going to be available? Let me know.
Yeah.
Other than that.
That one mine? Thank you. Now along to the next meeting.
Motually adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? You guys.